All right, everybody. I think we should get underway. It wasn't too many town meetings ago. I recall that we got out of here in 28 minutes. My guess is that that might not happen tonight, but we'll see. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to democracy. This is the real thing, and we should be damn proud of what we're all doing here tonight. My name is John Miller. I'm the town moderator. And if you did not attend last October's town meeting, electronic voting and the white clicker you have been issued might be new to you. More on that in a few minutes, but first, please rise if you are able for the pledge of allegiance. There's a flag on the stage and also in the rafters. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As is our tradition, let's take a few moments of silence for a purpose that is meaningful to you. It is customary that we find a talented Mashpee resident to inspire us at the beginning of these meetings. Tonight, I'm delighted to introduce Charlie Jenkins. Not only is Charlie about to graduate, but she is also her class's valedictorian and something on an expert, we're told, on collaboration and working together to achieve a better result, which is our collective goal at this meeting after all. Charlie Jenkins?
As I look around, I am filled with such gratitude for the opportunity to witness the incredible level of community involvement within this room. After all, discussions and actions at the local level are the most productive forces of change, so I thank you all for being here. As I look back at my time at Mashpee, I can always recall being on some sort of team, whether it be a rec soccer team or a volunteer-based team like Girl Scouts. My mom always encouraged me to enter spaces that breed connection and collaboration. In return, I was provided with immense support and amplification of my own passions, a vast well of knowledge on different perspectives, culture, ideas, and, most importantly, but often looked over, lots of laughter. Mashpee is incredible for that because we have such an inclusive and connected, yet diverse, community. I've had incredible opportunities to branch out and connect with a wide range of members in our community. For example, a luncheon with the men's club or coaching the same recreation soccer program I was a part of when I was young. Getting involved with the community allows you to connect with the members of the town that you don't get to see on a regular basis, which is expansive to one's perspective and enriches aspects of one life that isn't expected. I will see the children I coached in public or when I visit them at school for other volunteer projects and see their faces light up. I know I remember the feeling they all had when they see a friendly face. I also remember every one of my mentors, coaches, and troop leaders, starting from kindergarten, all who were volunteers from this community and probably in this room right now. We all shape each other's lives as we connect, teaching each other new skills, providing a platform for our voices to be heard, and for simply the wonders of life to be enjoyed. It is the foundation to a good quality of life. It is what makes us human. And as I move on to the next part of my life, pursuing higher education, I find myself feeling incredibly nostalgic about the feeling of community throughout my time at Mashpee. But I also try to remind myself that it's not a nostalgic feeling that resides in the memory of playing coed soccer or the bridging ceremonies with my old Girl Scouts troop. Instead, my community transforms as it's taken with me throughout life. So I encourage you to reflect on the connections you hold with those around you, prioritize the impact you make, and always be willing to get involved in a new way. You never know what it will teach you or who your actions have an impact on. Thank you so much for your time. I hope you continue to welcome youth voices into these influential decision-making spaces. There are so many more of us with bigger passions and louder voices than just me. Thank you.
The epistle, according to Charlie. Thank you very much. An inspiration to us all. And contrary to some popular opinion, the future of America is favorable. Next, I'd like to call on the chair of our select board, John Cotton.
So Pat Costello, right here, has provided over three decades of legal service to the town of Mashpee. Just an amazing thing, and it's behind the scenes. You're not aware of it, but there's a lot of legal advice that goes on day to day to manage this town, so Pat should be commended for that. But this proclamation right here is today is Pat Costello Day, so I'd like to present this to Pat Costello. I'd also like to ask the town manager, Rodney Collins, to come up and say a few additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a plaque that I will read before all of you. Patrick J. Costello, Mashpee General Town Council. The town of Mashpee extends its grateful appreciation for your 30 years of dedicated and professional service. Your trusted counsel and advice have provided the town with competent and effective guidance through the interpretation and application of various bylaws and general laws. The town wishes you the best, health and happiness in retirement, and thanks for your commitment. Pat Costello officially retires this year, July 1, 2024. In gratitude, please give him one more round of applause.
There seemed to be something magical about 29 or 30 years in Mashpee. My predecessor, Jerry Carter, was the town moderator for 29 years, I believe. Debbie K., our town clerk, has been a town employee here for 29 or 30 years, give or take. Pat Costello has been doing the lawyering bit for 29 years. Patty DeBoer, our superintendent of schools, actually, tonight, if I'm not mistaken, will be her last town meeting in that official capacity, but Patty's been in the Mashpee school system for 29 or 30 years, too. So congratulations to all the three decaters. Should I collapse before your very eyes? We do have a deputy moderator by the name of Ed Gildea, who is somewhere here. Ed, are you here somewhere? Wave? Maybe not. I saw him earlier, but I don't plan on passing out, so don't worry. So a few housekeeping matters, and then we'll get on with things. If you're a Mashpee voter, you have in your possession a blue and white clicker. You see two options on it, yes or no. How many here tonight did not attend the previous town meeting where these are used? If you could raise your hand. Quite a few. So we're going to run a couple of little sample questions as we did last time. So electronic voting at town meeting has become a common practice across the state and here on the Cape. It's quicker and more accurate than hand counts. It's also secure. There is no connection to the Internet or the cloud. No record is kept of who voted for what. And it's also private. The person sitting next to you does not know how you voted one way or the other, just like when you go to the polls. So how about a couple of practice rounds? You'll see the question or motion on the screen, and the way it works is when that's presented, after the motion is read, I will say, "Vote now," and you will proceed to press yes or no. You have 20 seconds to do that, and within that 20 seconds, you can change your vote by toggling to the alternate option. It's just that make sure that the last time you voted within that 20 seconds is the one that you want to count, because if you don't, it'll record the last vote you made within the 20 seconds. If you wish to abstain, simply do not press any button. Ready? Question one: Will the Bruins prevail over the Panthers in tonight's opening game of round two of the playoffs? You can also see the voting increment on the bottom line if you look at the screen. I think it follows that the quicker, within the 20 seconds you press one of those two buttons, the quicker we get the result. This is merely an opinion question. There's no prerequisite for that, so... Well, I guess we have the answer. Congratulations to the optimists. You want one more? One more? Okay. Have you ever lied about your birthday at a restaurant to get a free dessert? Well, very impressive result. Congratulations to the honest people here. As for the other 51 of you, we know all the popular restaurants and who runs them. By the way, in the case of a two-thirds vote, somebody asked that question, or other quantum vote like nine-tenths, which we have one of this evening, the system will calculate the math and it will show on the screen what the result is, whether that motion passed or failed. You may have noticed that some folks tonight are holding a colored card. These are issued to Mashpee property owners and taxpayers who are not registered voters in Mashpee. They do have the right to speak when recognized by the moderator, or they may be town department heads who are not residents but are authorized to speak to an article if asked. Speakers who are voters may be asked to hold up or display your clicker just for verification or wear it around your neck with a lanyard if you prefer. When you leave tonight, exit through the main doors and make certain that your clicker is collected. What is known about each numbered clicker is who it is assigned to in case follow-up is necessary. They're expensive. Finally, I call your attention to the partial listing of town meeting rules in the back of your blue books. Questions and respectful discussion are encouraged. Brevity is a virtue, and we encourage adhering to the four Cs of our town meetings: be concise, be civil, be constructive, and be courteous. Onward we go with the special town meeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and summons inhabitants of the town who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the 6th day of May, 2024, for the following purposes: to act on the articles contained in the following warrant. Long pause waiting for Mr. Cotton.
Motion we made... Motion, I moved that the town moderator... Sorry, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I motion, I moved that the town vote to dispense with the reading of the special town meeting warrant articles.
We have a motion and a second. We don't have to use the clickers every time. When I think a voice vote will get the job done more quickly, we'll use that. So all those in favor of that motion say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article number one, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $864.05 from the revenue available for appropriation to pay the previous fiscal year's unpaid bill as follows.
I'll second.
Alagunquin Acquisition Company LLC, Boston Globe Media Partners LLC, of $864.05.
Motions to pay bills from a prior fiscal year require a nine-tenth vote, which is what we would be seeking here. It's a yes or no vote? And based on the outcome, 358 to 19, total of 377, that motion carries. Congratulations, we're underway. Article number two, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's always a pleasure. Motion to be made. I move the town vote to approve Article II as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase of "take any other action related thereto."
Second. Motion is made and seconded. Recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article II by a vote of 7-0.
Any discussion? Hearing none. And the motion carries, 381 to 13. It appears we have about 400 voters here tonight, if everybody is voting. Thank you for coming. Article number three, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article III as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article III by a vote of 7-0.
I'm happy to ask for the select board's recommendation, if you would prefer. It's probably good practice. Select Board recommendation on Article III?
Is 4 to 0.
In favor. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion for Article III, proceed to vote now, or to vote no, as 348 to 19, the motion carries. Thank you very much. I'll never live this one down. The town clerk just politely advised me that her tenure with the town is not 29 or 30 years. You want to guess? She's been here longer than my age. Moving on to Article number four, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article IV as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second. Select Board recommendation?
The Select Board recommends approval of Article IV by a vote of 4-0.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article IV by a vote of 6-0.
This involves borrowing, so it does require a two-thirds vote. And that motion passed, 400 to 24. I apologize for neglecting to invite any discussion. Not that it would matter at this point, but did anybody have any discussion? Hearing none, I'll try to avoid that in the future. My apologies. Article number five, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article V as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second. Select Board recommendation?
5 to 0.
We're recommending approval. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article V by a vote of 6-0.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article V? And the motion carries, 377 to 23. You can also see that a vote has passed if the bar across the top of the screen turns green. One of the words up there is "passed" or "not passed." If it's green, it passed. Article number six, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article VI as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second. Select Board recommendation?
Select Board recommends approval of Article VI by a vote of 4 to 0.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article VI by a vote of 7-0.
Any discussion on Article VI? Hearing none. And that motion carries, 365 to 15. Let's try a voice vote in the interest of time on this next article, number seven, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article VII as printed in the warrant with the exception of... I... What the motion, I'm sorry. I move the town vote and approve Article VII as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "and take any other action related thereto."
Finance, Select Board recommendation?
Select Board recommends approval of Article VII by a vote of 4 to 0.
And Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article VII by a vote of 7-0.
Any discussion? Looking for a unanimous voice vote? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Carried unanimously. Thank you. Article number eight, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article VIII as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action related thereto."
Second.
Board recommends Article VIII by 4 to 0.
And Finance Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article VIII by a vote of 6 to 1.
Any discussion on Article VIII? Want to try a voice vote? Any discussion? All those in favor of Article VIII, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article number nine, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article IX as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto." The Select Board recommends approval of Article IX by a vote of 5-0.
Second. And Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article IX by a vote of 6-0.
Any discussion on Article IX? Got your clickers ready? Article IX carries, 397 to 27. Article number 10, which requires a two-thirds vote, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article 10 as printed in the warrant with the exceptions of replacing the phrase "a sum of money" with the phrase "the sum of $2,821,000" and deleting the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Select Board recommendation?
Select Board recommends approval of Article 10 by a vote of 3 to 1.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee does not recommend approval of Article 10 by a vote of 7-0.
Do we have discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Is there an on button? On? On?
You're good.
Hi, Arden Russell, Sturgis Lane. I am the chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I just want to explain the process to the voters. Originally, the dollar amount was not printed in the warrant because we did not yet have an appraisal returned to us in time for the printing of the warrant. Once that appraisal came in, we have been negotiating with the owners, and we now have a dollar amount in there. This is a really important purchase for the town. It's 17 acres on Mashpee Wakeby Pond on a degraded water body. This is a clean water initiative, and I urge voters to support purchase of open space and removing potential development. And that's it. I hope you vote for the article. Thank you.
Thank you.
The dollar amount was stated in the article, $2,821,000.
Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Susan Dangle, Kattuut Road. I'm also the president of Save Mashpee Wakeby Pond Alliance, and I'm actually shocked that the Finance Committee reversed their 7 to nothing approval of this article.
Excuse me. We did not vote originally to approve it. We made no recommendation at that time, waiting for tonight to make our recommendation.
I apologize for that, but still, as we all probably know, the pond... I apologize for that, but still, as we all probably know, the ponds of our town are in very bad shape. Am I allowed to give a visual, Mr. Moderator?
By what means would you do that?
A little tiny sign, picture, a photo.
Tiny signs, go for it.
I don't know if you can see it. This is Mashpee-Wakeby Pond last summer. The entire pond was this color. We are not in any of the clean water plans for searing. We have only a certain number of things at our disposal right now. That has to do with stormwater management, fertilizer management, and we are awaiting a diagnostic study to see if there are anything else we can do. But one of the things we did as our alliance formed three years ago was put protecting undeveloped land as one of our critical charter initiatives. This is seventeen acres, and the money is, is what it is appraised at, and the people who are wanting to sell this want to conserve the land. They're not going to deal unless we have a deal, unless we have money confirmed. And it says so in the warrant that this would not increase the tax base or the tax burden on the town because this is community preservation funds already in hand. So I urge the town voters to say yes. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article ten? Hearing none, get out your clickers and vote. Hold on, one more speaker.
Hello, I'm new to Mashpee, but could the Finance Committee explain maybe?
Could you, could you give your name and address?
Oh, let them on check seven Stony Brook Drive. Could the Finance Committee maybe give according to the FOCs the reason they are not supporting this apparently beneficial to the whole area motion?
I recognize the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee just found out basically the dollar amount tonight's meeting. We have not had a chance to vet it, and as our understanding, they're still in the midst of negotiating the actual sale price. So we're not, we were not in favor of recommending two-point-eight as a set amount.
Any further discussion on Article ten? Seeing or hearing none, get your clickers out and vote now. This is a two-thirds vote, and it has passed. Just a postscript, if I may, to the gentleman that shouted out "vote yes." We don't encourage that type of behavior. Thank you, and in the future. The town clerk, by the way, tells us officially there are four hundred and sixty-four voters here tonight, so thank you for the turnout. That concludes all of the articles in tonight's special town meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn that meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It's unanimous. All right, moving on to the annual town meeting. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby directed to notify and summon inhabitants of the town of Mashpee who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School the sixth day of May, two thousand twenty-four, at seven P.M. or so for the following purposes, to act on the articles in the warrant. Mr. Cotton.
I move the town vote to dispense with the reading of the annual town meeting warrant articles.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Article number one, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article one as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action related thereto."
Second.
Select Board Recommendation?
The Select Board recommends approval of Article one by a vote of four to zero.
And Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article one by a vote of seven-zero.
Let's try a voice vote on this. All those, any discussion, first of all? All those in favor of Article one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article number two, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to fix the salaries of the elected officers as specified under the columns entitled Town Manager's Recommendation in line item two and twenty-two of the unanimous budget as described to the voters at the town meeting and further the town defray the expenses for the ensuing fiscal year by appropriation. Those amounts shown under columns entitled Town Manager's Recommendation and that to fund said appropriation, the town raise and appropriate sixty-eight thousand eight-hundred, sixty-eight million eight-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seven dollars and further appropriate and transfer from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to line item forty. Fifty-thousand to line item forty-one. Appropriate and transfer from the shellfish receipts reserved for appropriation account thirty-thousand to line item thirty-two. Appropriate and transfer from the waterways improvement fund thirty-two-thousand to the line item thirty-one. Appropriate and transfer from the cemetery receipts reserved for appropriation account ten-thousand to line item fifty-three. Appropriate and transfer from street bediment receipts reserved for appropriation account three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand to line item seventy. Forty-nine-thousand twenty-five dollars to line item seventy-two and a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand hundred-and-seventy, a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars to line item seventy-four. Appropriate and transfer from the septic bediment receipts reserved for appropriation account eighteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-five to line item seventy. Fifteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty to line item fifty-five and to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Act Fund two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand to line item seventy and six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars to line item seventy-two. And appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation two-million-one-hundred-thousand to line item seventy-eight.
Second.
Select Board? Select Board recommends approval of Article two by a vote of five-zero.
And Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article two by a vote of six-zero.
Please don't ask to have that motion repeated. I know it's hard to read at a distance, but the entire motion is on display. Historically, it's not been unheard of that the moderator reads each line item on these one, two, three, four, five pages of the operating budget. This moderator chooses not to do that, but you can still have your say. So what I would ask everyone to do is start on page, I don't have the page numbers here. The twenty, is it? Starts with, yeah, yeah, it is page twenty. So on that first page, if anybody wants to hold a line item for discussion, just speak out to hold line number, whatever it is, on those lines on that page, one, one through eighteen. Which line? Line two? Anything else? My assumption is when somebody asks for it to be held, that when we come back to talk about that item, that whoever asked for that would be the person speaking to it. Is that agreeable? Okay, not that others couldn't too. Anything else on lines one through eighteen? Page twenty-one, lines nineteen through thirty-six. Which line? Nineteen? Any other lines? Next page, twenty-two, items, lines thirty-seven through fifty. Which line? Forty-five. Anything else? Page twenty-three, lines fifty-one through sixty-six. Page twenty-four, lines sixty-seven through eighty-one. All right, so we'll come back to line two on page twenty, salary account for the Select Board.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Murphy, fifty-three Tracy Lane, and this is actually an amendment to line sort of one and a half, which is, I propose an amendment to change the category title "Select Men" to "Select Board," which we voted on three years ago now, and it's still appearing incorrect in the program.
We could actually make that amendment. Would you like to do that? Do we have a second to that motion for an amendment?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment?
Words matter, and we've already voted, you know, to, to make this change, so.
Voice, voice vote. All those in favor of changing the nomenclature to "Select Board," say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Good catch. Finally, we're in the twenty-first century. Page twenty-one, line item nineteen.
Yes, Alexander Watt, Pimlico Pond Road. My question is, later on in the warrant, there's an article that seeks to fund a new position in the information technology, and I'm wondering if that's the reason for the discrepancy between the department request and FinCom and town manager recommendations.
Do we have an answer?
The short answer is, yes. There was a request initially, when a new position is created, it is generally a standalone article. Even though this indicates that there's a new position, essentially what we would be doing or what you would be approving if you did vote in the affirmative is taking an old position and turning it into a new position. The person who used to take care of IT work at the PD retired, and instead of replacing that individual, this article would create a new IT position. The person, instead of reporting to the PD, would report to IT, and finally, that person would be shared between the PD and the FD, so they would just have to walk back and forth during the course of the day to take care of all of the IT issues, and quite frankly, that caseload has risen in the last few years.
Okay, may I, so the amount that we're voting on for this line item here would, would be increased by the article next, right?
If you approve the subsequent article, yes.
Correct, okay. I think I have the next objection, and I'd speak to that as well.
You're referring to line forty-five?
Correct, yes. Now, I think on line forty-five, the same question applies. I think there's a, an article later on in the warrant that seeks to add a position to DPW, if I'm correct.
You are.
I don't, I don't see the reduction, though, in Finance Committee recommendation or Town Manager recommendation.
I'm going to defer to the DPW Director, just in case I am specifically missing something because I'm not exactly sure what number you're referring to.
Catherine Laurent, DPW Director. So the line item forty-five does not include the new position. That was the directive from the Town Manager when we submitted our budget to submit a separate article for a new position. So the line item forty-five is our existing staff, and the article later on the warrant is for a new position. That salary would be added to this line item forty-five if approved.
I think that explains it. I just wonder why there are different procedures when one asks for the department request, whether that should be the same in information technology as it is for Department of Public Works.
Not hearing an answer to that. Does anybody else want to add something to an item not already on hold? All right, seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the article as amended to change the Select Board reference. And got your clickers out and vote now. I see that. Sorry about that. And Article number three is passed, two seventy-four to twenty-five. Article two, what did I say? Okay, Article two passes two seventy-four to twenty-five. Sorry about that. Now, Article three. Mr. Whedon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of four million five-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars as follows. Two million nine-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars, six-hundred-and-thirty-four, from the capital stabilization fund, four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account, nineteen-thousand dollars Department of Environmental Protection, DEP grant, one-hundred-thousand dollars from the Mashpee Cable and Advanced Technology account, and one million dollars from revenue available for appropriation to various departmental capital accounts as specified in the charts accompanying this article.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article three by a vote of five-zero.
And Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article number three by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article three? This does require two-thirds vote, so we'll use the clickers. Vote now. Vote now. Article three passes by a two-thirds vote, three sixty-eight to twenty-three. Article number four, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of ninety-six million, one hundred thousand dollars to fund implementation and construction of Phase Two of the town's comprehensive nitrogen and wastewater management, treatment, and disposal improvement plans, including expansion of the Water Resource Recovery Facility adjacent to the town's solid waste transfer station. Sewer mains, pump stations, and related sewer collection system improvements, and costs relating to the acquisition of necessary easements and other interests in real property, conveying the right to locate, relocate, erect, construct, reconstruct, install, operate, maintain, patrol, inspect, repair, replace, alter, change the location of, extend or remove, piping, lift stations, low-pressure sewers, generators, odor controls, electrical and other necessary equipment and apparatus, including all costs incidental or related thereto, and including without limitation all costs thereof, as defined in Section One of Chapter Twenty-nine C of the General Laws. The project that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow such amount and issue bonds or notes, therefore, under Chapter Forty-four of the General Laws and/or Chapter Twenty-nine C of the General Laws. And further, that the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, and in connection therewith to enter into a financing agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof. And that the Select Board is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the DEP to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project, provided that any grant, state or federal aid, or other funds received for the project shall be used to offset the total appropriation authorized herein. And provided further that this appropriation and debt authorization shall be contingent upon passage of a Proposition Two and a Half debt exclusion ballot question pursuant to General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Twenty-one C.
Second. The Select Board recommends approval of Article Four by a vote of five-zero.
Thank you, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four by a vote of six-zero.
Any discussion on Article Four? Mr. Cotton.
John Cotton, Thirty Nobbska Road. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mashpee's two bays are in bad shape. The primary cause of bad water quality is excessive, is excess nitrogen from septic systems. We have known this for many years, and we also know that expanding sewers are the best and most reliable way to restore water quality. We are here tonight to ask your support for the next step in the town's efforts to bring our waters back. Three years ago, this very town, at this very town meeting, unanimous, we unanimously approved this initial Phase One of our wastewater plan. The town plan has been in existence since two thousand and fifteen, and we are following the general steps it laid out. We are building in phases to make sure each step we make makes sense and to spend, and to spread out the costs. You might have heard, we do not have a plan, but we do, and it is being put into action. All committees, boards, and commissions in Mashpee are working together to assure we are doing the right thing. Restoring the waters of Poppin' Esset and Wacoit, Wacoit Bays is not only legally required, it is the right thing to do. The plan was designed to be adaptive, done in stages, and to adjust to changes in our water quality. In the nine years since the plan was approved by the town of, town, the town of Mashpee and the state of Massachusetts, our waters have gotten worse than many have expected. Phase One of this project is underway, and with tonight's affirmative vote, Phase Two will finally be able to make a significant dent in the nitrogen removal. Taken together, completions of Phase One and Two of the Clean Water Plan will result in forty-two percent reduction of nitrogen in the Poppin' Esset Bay watershed. So in this watershed, we will be about halfway toward meeting our goal to restore Poppin' Esset Bay. Phases one and two of, of, Phases One and Two of the sewer give the town a state-of-the-art treatment plant with the capacity to sewer as many as three thousand homes. The two phases combined build the plant and connect seventeen hundred and twenty-seven homes. With this affirmative vote tonight, we will have, we can, we can surely achieve zero percent financing, twenty-eight point three percent loan forgiveness, cost offsets from the whiff of two percent property tax that began back in two thousand and twenty, rooms tax of six percent tax paid on overnight rentals paid to visitors to our community and, and not by, paid by property taxpayers. The town was able to cover one hundred percent of the cost of Phase One without an increase to property taxes. Relying on those same resources just listed, Phase Two will cost Mashpee residents approximately seventy-five dollars per year for the average home valued at seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That is what we are asking for tonight. Loan payments are due, are not due until Phase Two is completed. So that seventy-five dollar average home year tax increase won't begin until two thousand and twenty-nine. I'm a banker, and let me, let me tell you one thing, I know about loans. Interest, no interest cost for which I only pay back seventy-one point seven cents on every dollar borrowed is a great deal. The town's measured approach to this project and to the phasing allows costs to be broken into manageable chunks with each new phase put before the voters for approval. This process makes sense, and every step of the way, we will be, we will come before you with full cost proposals for the next phase and how we plan to pay for it. It costs money to develop accurate engineering plans sufficient to estimate construction costs. Spending tens of millions of dollars for design and cost estimates for future phases that you are not planning to build in the near term is costly and a waste of money. The calls for total future cost estimates may sound good, but it sheds no real light on any near-term costs. We have a bad water quality problem, we know sewers are the best solution, we have a plan to do the right thing with a relative cost. Phase Two, as designed, makes sense. And above all, it is necessary for the next step of Mashpee. I urge you to vote yes at tonight and also on question one on the ballot. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any further discussion on Article Four? Michael Perkins, ninety-four Palmer Road.
My question has to do with the, the timing, Phase Two. Mr. Cotton, you indicated the forty-two percent benefit we'll get once Phase Two is up and operational. I believe is that how you stated it?
Correct.
So my, and my understanding is, at that point, we're going to stop all work and make those assessments to determine that the forty-two percent is realized. How long a period will that take, once we're up and operational?
I'm not sure, you're talking about, we're going to stop work?
You said we're going to achieve forty-two percent reduction in our contaminants in the water. How long will it take to verify we've gotten to the forty-two percent? Because my understanding was, Phase Three wouldn't be initiated until we knew we were on track to deliver the forty-two.
Yeah, it's an ongoing, it's not an instantaneous fix. I'm not an engineer and, you know, biologist. This process is a long, and all I can tell you is, we can be guaranteed to look at this step by step. And I think that's what I try to get across here. We're not looking at the complete, you know, the entire town right now, because what we know is, what we know is, right now is, Phase One is in the works. Phase Two is, is, we're hoping to pass today, tonight. And then we will assess the situation at that time. This, we're not even talking about this completion until two thousand and twenty-nine. You know, that's, you know, five years from now. So at that point, we will assess and decide, I mean, there's plenty of committees in town, you know, that are looking at, what is the next step? What is Phase Three? I don't know. We don't know at this time, but we'll assess, you know, the water quality and, you know, in cost-effective manner, and what's the best process for the next step. Does that make sense?
Sort of, I, I would hope with an undertaking this large, that we would have, you know, the right engineering resources here, maybe, who could comment and elaborate on my, my question, if you can answer.
Yeah, I.
Mr. Chair.
I, I feel like it's a difficult question to answer, because there's a lot of variables. You know, I think to gauge your success on forty-two percent cleaning of the waters, there's, if we continue to build and there's not kind of smaller treatment plant facilities, then are you effectively meeting that goal? Are you considering future development? And so, you know, this is specifically, I think, targeted, Phases One and Two address Poppin' Esset watershed. We still have Walk White watershed to address. And so, you know, there's a lot of factors to that. And it's fluid, there's things that's always changing. Future development, how is that done? Is there adequate infrastructure in the, put in place commensurate of the future build-out? Those factors are, are not, I, we don't know that information at this time.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mary Adams Olexak, eighteen Capstan Circle. I was part of the group of citizens that started Mashpee Clean Waters that tried to begin to catalyze this conversation a number of years ago. And I don't speak as, as a scientist, but I can tell you that we have held a number of, of forums on Zoom during COVID. And we had a number of scientists talk to us about what, how this process proceeds. And as many of you know, we have had an annual testing program. It's a joint project between the town, the tribe, and UMass Dartmouth. And so we have very good data for every summer, both watersheds, and track it. And so we, that will continue, I imagine, until we, you know, hopefully someday can stop. But we will be able to see the trend. And what, what we were told, going back to Phase One, is that as you begin to remove nitrogen, nature is very resilient. And between shellfish, and if we can get the native flora and fauna to come back, then that, that will help us in this process. Mashpee was the first town to get in the nation to get approval to use shellfish as part of the, the healing process. Right now, shellfish can't live in parts of the Mashpee River because the conditions are so bad. But this is going to be a combination of, we have to have the sewers, but then as, as we begin to get more and more nitrogen out, we're going to see the trends. And that's why it's an adaptive process, why it was originally supposed to be five phases. And we don't know that we'll need to do all five. But you can't, as, as Chairman Cotton explained, you, it would be foolish for us to try and plan the entire process without learning from the data every year. And that, that testing process will continue. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. McKelvey. Is it possible to hear from our wastewater superintendent is the question?
If I could just say one thing, Mr. Moderator, before.
Yes, Mr. Collins.
I just want to assure the gentleman that spoke, we're going to look at everything in terms of the data. Fertilization, stormwater, DNR program, the seumering, we're going to listen to GHD. We're going to listen to our engineering consultant, UMass Dartmouth, the wastewater superintendent who's about to speak. We're going to listen to all of them, that I assure you, before any decision is made in terms of staff recommendation to the policymakers.
Apparently, it is possible.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jared Meter, wastewater superintendent, town of Mashpee. To answer your question about the, are we going to continue testing and monitoring? Yes, we're always testing, monitoring, we have monitoring wells in the ground. We'll continue to monitor those, at least quarterly, as we move forward. The numbers we have are based off of projections. It, it takes years to see the results, if you're at the head of the source, to go, for the water to get to the, the water bodies. So we heard a talk the other night from a UMass professor who explained, you know, in some cases, it's half a foot a day that water moves underground. So again, it could take years, depending on how far it's traveling. The one thing we can tell you is that when you do sewer, you're removing that nitrogen. It's going to a facility that is being treated to a certain level, far greater than what would you get in a Title V, or in some cases, most IAs, there are some good ones out there. Wakeby, Mashpee, or the, yeah, the Wakeby watershed is where we're probably, Wacoit? Wacoit, see, I always get them confused, I'm still learning, from the Vineyard, by the way. So I'm learning my Cape Cod slowly. So we're looking, focusing over there right now. No definite plans have been laid out, we're trying to get Phase Two off the ground. But that's the area we look at. But even if we do go to another direction, we always continue to monitor and see how we do. Like Speaker said earlier, the intent is to give Mother Nature that hand to stand up on her own. She just, she's in such bad health right now, we're just trying to, to take care of her. And then hopefully, far before the twenty-year plan is done, is my hope, she'll get up and say, okay, I got this from here on out. And then all the shellfish promulgation, everything will actually do its job. But it won't do its job until we get rid of the source of the pollution. Hope that answers.
Thank you, any further discussion on this article? Hearing none, let's move to the vote. This does require two-thirds vote, so get your clickers out and vote now. The article passes. Three fifty-eight to twenty-seven, the required two-thirds vote. History has been made tonight. Article number five, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town will vote to repurpose the, a portion of the appropriation and borrowing authorization for capital improvements approved under Article eleven at the May first, two thousand and twenty-three Annual Town Meeting, and excluded from the limitation of the Proposition Two and a Half, General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Twenty-one C, at the May sixth, two thousand and twenty-three Annual Town Election, to the following purposes, as recommended by the Capital Improvement Program, CIP, Committee, including all costs incidentals, incidental or related thereto.
Committee, including all costs incidentals, incidental or related thereto, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to issue bonds and notes for such purposes as follows. DPW masonry wall restoration, eighty thousand dollars. Police station design and engineering, two million seven hundred thousand dollars, for a total of two million seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second. The Select Board recommends approval of Article five by a four to zero vote.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article five by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article Five.
Don Marys, nine half H. Lane, I have a question. I, I'm on a clarification. Is this a design of a new building or a renovation? Because when I read the explanation printed in the warrant by the FinCom, it mentions renovation. But when I attended a CIP meeting, it sounded to me like it was designing a new building. So, is it a renovation that we're approving, or is it a new building? Because they're two different things.
The DPW has answers to everything, almost.
Catherine Laurent, DPW Director. So, the, the town did do a feasibility study to look at renovation versus a, a new building. And the decision was made to move forward with a new building. So, this would fund design for a new building.
Is that what FinCom approved, or did they approve a renovation?
The Finance Committee approve, recommends approval of the engineering design of whatever the project entails. And if, if the DPW has decided the, the design is to reconstruct, as opposed to renovate, that's what the, the Finance Committee has, has recommended.
It was presented as a, a new building.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article Five. Hearing none. This requires a two-thirds vote. Please vote now. And the motion carries, two fifty-two to ninety. Article Six, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote, well, to authorize, re-authorize, and extend for an additional three years and appropriation and transfer of the sum of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the capital, for the capital stabilization fund for the purpose of the resurfacing of the MMHS parking lot recommended, recommended by the Capital Improvement Program, CIP, Committee, as a previously approved at the, excuse me, at the May third, two thousand twenty-one Annual Town Meeting by a vote under Article Three for the warrant.
Second.
Select Board.
Select Board recommends approval of Article Six by a four to zero vote.
And Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Six? This requires a two-thirds vote. Let's try for unanimous. All those in favor say aye? Opposed, say nay? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Article Seven, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to repurpose the sum of a hundred and thirty thousand from the Department of Natural Resources FY twenty twenty-three capital account to the Department of Natural Resources FY twenty twenty-five capital account as recommended by the Capital Improvement Program, CIP Committee, and approved at the May second, 2022 Special Town Meeting by vote under Article Five of the warrant.
Second.
Select Board recommends approval of this Article Seven of four to zero.
And Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seven by a vote of seven to zero.
Let's try another voice vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor say aye? Opposed, say nay? Passes unanimously. It passes almost unanimously. Article number eight, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article Eight, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article Eight by a vote of four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eight by a vote of seven to zero.
Since we are enjoying voting out loud so much, let's try it again. All those in favor, any discussion, by the way, on Article Eight? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye? Those opposed, nay? Unanimously. Thank you. Number, Article Nine, Ms. Wyman Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article Nine, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends Article, the approval of Article Nine by a vote of four to nothing, four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Nine by a vote of seven to zero.
Is there any discussion on Article number nine? Let's try voice vote for a majority. All those in favor say aye? Opposed, say nay? Unanimous. Thank you. Article Ten, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Ten, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article Ten by a vote of four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Ten by a vote of six to one.
Any discussion on Article Ten? Let's try a voice vote again. All those in favor say aye? Opposed, say nay? Unanimous. Article number eleven, Mr. O'Hara.
And thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate, approve, sorry, Article eleven, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action related thereto.
Second. Select Board recommends approval of Article eleven by a vote of four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article eleven by a vote of six, of seven to zero.
Thank you. Discussion on Article eleven. We're getting good at voice votes, so, all those in favor, please say aye? Opposed, say nay? Unanimous. Article twelve, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article twelve, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article twelve by a vote of four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twelve by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article twelve? All those in favor say aye? Opposed, say no, nay? Unanimous. Article thirteen, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article thirteen, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article thirteen by a vote of four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article thirteen? Let's use the clickers on this one. Vote now. Just didn't want you to get out of practice. And Article thirteen passes two seventy-five to thirty. Article fourteen, Ms. Lyman, Wyman Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article fourteen, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article fourteen by a vote of four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article fourteen by a vote of six to one.
Discussion on Article fourteen.
Alexander Watt, Penlico Pond Road. So, my first question is, when it sends FinCom, or when FinCom says this will have no impact on the current tax rate, what does FinCom mean by that? Is that, we're talking about FY twenty-four or FY twenty-five?
FY twenty-five.
So, we're voting to appropriate more money, wouldn't it necessarily have an impact on the tax rate?
No, because it's, the, the way this position is being funded, it is being funded from revenue available for appropriation, quote unquote, free cash. It's money we already have. So, for 2025, there is no impact on the tax rate.
So, you don't have to indicate that it's being a transfer from free cash, instead of raise and appropriate?
I believe, I believe it says so in, in the article.
It says revenue available for appropriation?
Yes, that's, that's what that is.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on Article fourteen? We'll use the clickers on this vote now. Article fourteen passes two, two seventy-nine to thirty-one. Article fifteen, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article fifteen, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article fifteen by a vote of four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article fifteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article fifteen. Seeing none, let's use the clickers. Please vote now. Article fifteen passes two sixty-five to twenty-five. Thank you. Article sixteen, Mr. O'Hara.
Again, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve the Article sixteen, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other other action related thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article sixteen by a vote of four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article sixteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article sixteen? We'll use the clickers. Hearing none. Everybody can vote now. Article sixteen, excuse me, passes two seventy-five to twenty-seven. Pardon my hay fever. Article number seventeen, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article seventeen, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Select Board approves Article seventeen by a four to zero vote.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article seventeen by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article seventeen. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Crowley from Nine Beacon Court. And this relates to the staffing and also the town meeting. I just wanted to compliment Chief Colleen on how the last town meeting was handled, as far as everyone exiting. An officer went and positioned his crews at a block, Route one fifty-one and Old Barnstable Road, and pulled everyone out of the high school parking lot. People were gone in a heartbeat. So, I don't know if that was your idea, chief, or if that was something that the officer took upon himself. But I hope that can be standard practice for this meeting and everyone going forward, so thank you.
Well, aren't we all grateful for the editorial on behalf of our police department? And thank you very much, even though it's completely out of order relative to the article we're discussing. Any other comment on this discussion, preferably one that's pertinent? Not that that was impertinent. You know what I mean, sir. All right. Let your clickers out, and vote now. Article seventeen passes by a vote of two eighty-nine to twenty-four. And since the chief has another recruit for the department, there'll now be two cruisers at Route one fifty-one at the end of town meeting. Maybe. Article number eighteen, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of five, five hundred and ninety-six thousand fifty-six dollars to provide for road improvement projects in and for the town in accordance with the provisions of Chapter ninety of the Massachusetts General Laws, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow this said sum of five hundred and ninety-six thousand fifty-six dollars under and pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven and eight, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article eighteen by a vote of four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article number eighteen by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article eighteen? Requires a two-third vote. We'll use the clickers, and you may vote now. Article eighteen passes two eighty-four to nine. Two-thirds is satisfied. Article number nineteen, Ms. Wyman Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article nineteen, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article nineteen by a vote of four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article nineteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article nineteen? Hearing none, let's try a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye? Opposed, nay? Unanimous. Article twenty, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article twenty, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board voted in favor of four to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty by a vote of seven-zero.
Discussion on Article twenty? Let's try a voice vote again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Unanimous. Article twenty-one, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote and approve Article twenty-one as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second. The Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-one by a vote of four-to-zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-one by a vote of seven-zero.
Discussion on Article twenty-one? Let's vote out loud again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Unanimous. Article twenty-two, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-two as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-two by a four-to-zero vote.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-two by a vote of seven-zero.
Discussion on Article twenty-two? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Unanimous. Article twenty-three, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-three as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-three by a vote of four-zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-three by a vote of seven-zero.
Discussion on Article twenty-three? Let's use the clickers this time. You may vote now. Article twenty-three passes two ninety-one to fifteen. Article twenty-four, Ms. Wyman Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-four as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-four by a vote of four-zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-four by a vote of seven-zero.
Any discussion on Article twenty-four? We'll try a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Unanimous. Article twenty-five, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to authorize the Select Board to grant to EverSource Energy its respective successors and assigns a non-exclusive easement conveying the right to locate, relocate, erect, construct, reconstruct, install, operate, maintain, patrol, inspect, repair, replace, alter, change the location of, extend or remove primary wires, transformers, poles, and conduits, together with service conductors and other necessary equipment and apparatus along, upon, under, across, and over a certain parcel of land situated at three hundred and three eighty Asher's Path Mashpee, as further described and shown on Mashpee Assessors Map as map sixty-one and as lot three on the plan of land recorded at the Bonstable County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book one sixty-one, Plan Thirty-nine, and Plan Book one seventy-two, page eighty-seven, and to authorize the Select Board to execute all instruments and do all things necessary to carry out the provisions of this article.
Second.
And the Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-five by a vote of five-to-zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-five by a vote of six-zero.
Discussion on Article twenty-five? Let's try a voice vote again. All those in favor of Article twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Two-thirds required. Article twenty-six, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to accept provisions of Chapters forty-four dash five, three, F, and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws established by the Department of Wastewater Management and as an enterprise fund effective, effective fiscal year two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
And the Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-six by a vote of four-to-zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-six by a vote of seven-zero.
Any discussion on Article twenty-six? Let's use the clickers on this one. Vote now. Article twenty-six passes two seventy-eight to eighteen. Thank you. Article twenty-seven, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article twenty-seven as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-seven by a vote of four-zero.
And Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-seven by a vote of six-zero.
Any discussion on Article twenty-seven? Yes, sir.
Nathan Adams of eighty-one Edgewater Road. This sounds like there was a specific instance that led to this article being proposed. I'm aware that any new construction requires drainage John site so that that runoff doesn't go into the neighboring yard or the town's roads. So I'm wondering, is there a specific area or spot that drove this article?
The DPW Director is busy tonight.
There isn't, Catherine Laurent, DPW Director, there isn't a specific area, but as we are getting the more intensive rainstorms, we are noticing that we are getting isolated areas of flooding, which the town, we ourselves, are not able to accommodate all required improvements. So this will just give us the resources that if an abutter is contributing to a problem, that we can have them contribute to the solution.
The way this article, my objection to this article, is that there's nothing here that gives us specific guidelines as far as how much water and who decides when it is a problem. And so there's only one person to just decide when and how much water is too much. So this almost applies to everyone in town. If you're upgrade of the road and your land drains towards the road, well, then now you're subject to a three hundred dollar fine, and it's just up to one person to decide. And then if this is going to be the situation where you're subject to a fine, why is it the town can find you? But if you're downgrade of the road, which I've drove around the last couple days, saw a few places in town where the road drains onto private property. I happen to live at a place where it drains into my private property. This is what sparked my interest. So I brought it up to the town several times and was told that it's fine. And I happen to live right on Santuapon. That road water comes right into my yard, runs across the front yard, washes out along the side of my driveway. It used to flood my basement, and I had to fight tooth and nail to get some attention to that issue. And even to this day, it is still an issue. So I just take strong opposition to where the town can put the onus onto the private citizen, but the citizen can't gain any relief or that three hundred dollars in instance from the town. Thanks.
Next speaker.
Hello, thank you, Kate Miley Blackwatch Way. I'm just curious if this could be amended to include leaf debris as well as snow? As I live off an area like South Sandwich Road where I see people take snow from their yards, blow it into the road that has been freshly plowed, as well as leaf debris that then gets wet, can cause issues for my fabulous teenage drivers. Just curiosity, that's all.
If you wish to amend the article, we would need to know what the amendment is. If any.
Such power. Oh, I don't, I don't know. I'm curious what people would think if you would amend it to not include just water, but leaf and snow.
Not hearing an amendment. We can go to the next speaker. Who may have an amendment.
I would like to make an amendment to include leaf and snow.
All right. Don't mean to be a stickler on this, but we need the exact language, preferably in writing. Those are the rules.
I like rules. Noted.
Next speaker.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Alexander Watt, Penlico Pond Road. I agree with the prior gentleman that this seems very overbroad and unnecessary, but that being said, I would move to amend Article twenty-seven and place under Section one fifty dash eleven therein the word "willfully" following the word "shall" and prior to discharge.
Does everybody see or understand the proposed amendment? Is there a second to that motion? Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, we'll vote on the amendment to add the word "willfully" in the two places designated in Section one fifty dash eleven. Everybody understand? Okay. Let's try a voice vote on that. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Let's try it again. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Sounds to me like the ayes have it. Next speaker.
This is rather vague. What do you mean by discharging water? Does that mean if it rains down on your driveway and goes down into the road? Does that mean if the snow melts on your lawn and it goes onto the road? What does it mean?
Is there an answer to the gentleman's question?
It's just so vague. And then you're going to have police, well, we'll take care of this guy, but he's a friend of mine, I'm not going to do that. We know how that works.
I don't think you're speaking for everyone, sir.
I'm speaking only for myself.
So there, there obviously will be some discretion that will have to be applied. It is certainly not the intent of the bylaw to go after a property owner who may be discharging a small amount of water. This is really intended for larger properties, larger parking lots, where they do not have adequate stormwater infrastructure on their own property, and that water ends up on the town roads.
But it doesn't say that.
Any further discussion? I guess we're ready to vote on the amended article, number twenty-seven. We'll use the clickers for that. And you may vote now. Article twenty-seven fails by a vote of one sixty-eight to one oh five. End of the first period, no score. Article number twenty-eight, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article twenty-eight as printed in the warrant.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-eight by a vote of four-zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-eight by a vote of seven-zero.
And the Planning Board.
The Planning Board recommends approval of Article twenty-eight by a vote of five-to-zero.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article twenty-eight? Which requires a two-thirds vote? Let's try for a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article twenty-nine, Ms. Wyman Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article twenty-nine as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-nine by a vote of five-zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-nine by a vote of six-zero.
Discussion on Article twenty-nine? I wasn't sure if he was approaching the mic or approaching his chair. But now we know, he snuck in quietly. All right, let's try a voice vote on this one. All those in favor of Article twenty-nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article number thirty, we're almost there. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to extend for an additional three years the duration of the appropriation approved under Article twenty voted at May second, two thousand twenty-two, special town meeting for Santuit Pond Resiliency Projects and Stormwater Improvements within the Santuit Pond watershed.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article thirty by a vote of four-to-zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty by a vote of seven-zero.
Any discussion on Article thirty? Let's try a voice vote again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimously passed. Thank you. Article thirty-one, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article thirty-one as printed in the warrant with the exception and the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-one by a vote of seven-zero.
And Select Board.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article thirty-one by a vote of four-to-zero.
Any discussion on Article thirty-one? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article number thirty-two, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article thirty-two as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article thirty-two by a vote of four-to-zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-two by a vote of six to one.
Planning Board, care to weigh in? I guess not. Any discussion on Article thirty-two?
Alexander Watt, Penlico Pond Road. In my memory, most of these road projects are promoted by petition. The cost for any improvements are assessed to the abutters, and that appears to be what Article Article thirty-two is proposing. But I would like the Select and PINCOM to state why they are in favor of Article thirty-two and yet opposed to Article thirty-three. I think it's appropriate that we know that reasoning now.
Either board care to respond? So the question is, in what way do those two articles differ that result in a different recommendation? Is that?
That's essentially the question, yes.
So, so Article thirty-three is actually, a motion will be made to indefinitely postpone. The reason that the Select Board and the Finance Committee voted not to recommend was some issues came up with the cost of the betterment that caused them to, to want to put a pause on the, the article. If the article was not going to be indefinitely postponed, then the recommendation would be to not approve it just because of that uncertainty with the cost, which would then have an impact on the taxpayers.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Richard Donovan, Pondview Drive. I have a question in regard to the cost associated with this article. My understanding, I went to the town offices recently to ask about the town taking our private road, and I had a discussion with the young lady at the, at the office, and I understood that there is an assessment on the homeowners, once the process is initiated and approved. But this article appears that the cost of improvement, the cost of repairing the roadway is going to be borne by the town and not by the homeowners. I'd like some clarification on that, that difference. Why one road is taken for the betterments paid for by the town and the other betterments assessed to the taxpayer.
These costs will be assessed to the property owners as a betterment. It's, it's being expedited, which is why the Select Board are the, the ones who made the motion, but this was a petition article. It was expedited so that it can be done in conjunction with Phase one A of the sewer project, but this cost, the one hundred and twenty thousand and change will be paid by the property owners.
But the wording of the article does not indicate that.
It does.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misread it. It, it does indicate borne by the taxpayer, by the.
It will be a betterment to the, it'll be a betterment to the property owners on Christopher Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Collins. Just a friendly reminder to everyone, before you leave, please don't forget to leave your clickers with us. Thank you. Let me reiterate that. As you leave, leave your clicker behind. There will be nice, friendly folks to collect them, and angry people if you take it with you. Don't do that. All right. Further discussion on this article? Hearing none, let's try a voice vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I declare a two-thirds vote was met. It need not be unanimous. Moving on to Article number thirty-three, which is by petition. Mr. Homer, I believe.
Homer, Nahoyden Road. I move to indefinitely postpone Article thirty-three.
Second.
Recommendation? Probably don't need it on indefinite postponement, do we?
No.
Any discussion on indefinite postponement? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion does not carry. It is indefinitely postponed, and that concludes our annual town meeting for this spring. Thank you all. Please leave your clickers behind, and don't forget to vote on the two questions on the ballot on Saturday, May eleventh.